He moved here in 1991. So it's my great pleasure. When this lovely lady over here, Marcia, called and said, would you be our moderator for tonight's little gathering here, candidate forum? And I really appreciate that. Thank you, Marcia, because I get to see a lot of old friends. And tonight, we're going to do some good work as well. Because this is a very important election. We're going to hear from a lot of important people as well. Before we launch into this evening's forum, please help me welcome our host for this evening. We've got to keep this. Our host for this evening, Councilwoman, as the Air Force would say, Councilwoman Short, Marcia Versens. She's short.
Like George said, thank you so much for coming. It's really important that we do this and get you and the candidates face to face so that you will know, you will be able to have a name with face. The ballots will be out in, what, about five weeks, short five weeks? So we want you to be educated on who these folks are. And this is a very important election. You hear that every two years or every year. But this really is where you are, have by half a council to fill. And it's important that it's on there. So thank you so much for coming. And I want to thank George Peck for coming to be the moderator. And Barbara Peck, Sandra Barbara, this lovely woman. She's a parent on TV. And I want to thank them for offering their time. And of course, the City Library for letting us use this space. So let's get on with it. We have a full night. And thank you again.
All right, thank you, Marcia. Before we start the evening off, I'd like to go briefly through the ground rules for this evening. First of all, this is a forum. It is not a debate. And I will be asking questions that Councilwoman Versens has gathered from her constituents. And we will not be taking questions from the floor, although we certainly welcome candidates to talk to you once we're done for this evening. So hopefully, they'll all stick around a little while, and you'll have an opportunity to meet them personally and talk with them personally. Second, this is a timed event. As you have heard, our timer this evening, and I'll give a little background on her. She's a veteran timekeeper with the local Toastmasters. And they're pretty strict about their timing. And someone who's spent a lifetime trying to keep me on time is my lovely wife, Barbara. Now, here are some of the ground rules. Each candidate will be given two minutes for introductory remarks, then two minutes to answer each individual question, and finally, two minutes to do a wrap-up. Barbara will be timing each of these segments and will let you and me, as I'm watching, know by a colored card where you are time-wise. The green card means you're nicely within your two-minute limit. She'll show you a yellow card when you have 30 seconds left. At age, you're going to have to start getting your act together to close whatever you're saying, kind of close it out. And the red card means time is up, and you must quickly conclude your thoughts. Now, I'm not going to cut you off when you're in the middle of a sentence, but you should be at a point where you can summarize and so we can continue on. We will try and keep this fairly well tracked. First of all, we'll start this evening by hearing from our Ward Three candidate. Currently, we have two people vying for the Ward Three position, Ruben Medina and John O'Scott. Unfortunately, Mr. Medina was unable to join us this evening, but I will share a brief file on him. Ruben Medina is from Colorado. He's been married to his wife for 30 years. He's the father of three and grandfather of four. He's a community organizer, consultant, and wrestling coach. He currently works as a senior recreation specialist for the city of Aurora. Ruben sits on the Board of RISE and the Denver Foundation. John O'Scott is our other Ward Three candidate, and he has joined us here this evening. Welcome, John O'. By the way, by way of introduction, and John O', if you'd like to take your seat, that'd be great. By way of introduction, John O' is from Colorado and has lived in Aurora for over 30 years. He's married, has four children. He's the pastor and director of Kingdom Building Food Bank. He has a master's degree in religious education. John O' coaches community soccer teams through the Aurora Parks and Recreation Department. He's served on the Citizens Budget Advisory Committee since 2018 and is currently co-chair of that organization, or vice chair, although he's been doing a lot of the work because I also sit on the CABC. So anyhow, let's get started, and that way, we can roll through this pretty quickly. Mr. Scott, the floor is yours for your two-minute introductory remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming here tonight. I appreciate you all coming. I was late here. I'm sorry, I don't have my notes. Because as I came here, I went to start my car and realized it was broken into. And someone had prided the locks and taken the steering column apart and tried to hot-wire my car. I couldn't get here. Fortunately, someone was able to come pick me up. That's why I'm running for city council. I am very concerned about the direction of this city. I want to raise my, I was raised here. I've lived in Ward Three since I was six years old. I was raised here. I've spent every stage of my life here. Now, I'm raising my family here. I want to live here another 30 years in an environment where my kids can be proud to live in Aurora, feel safe, work freely, and have a high quality of life for families. That's why I'm running. I think if we're going to have success as a city, as a community, we need to have leaders who are both serving today so that we can be set for tomorrow. And that is my three main issues. My three main issues are safety, economic development, and transportation, S-E-T. And I really think that if we are going to thrive as a city in an environment where people and families can have a high quality of life, feel safe, and work freely, we're going to need to set the right path for the future. We need to have safety as a high priority, economic development, and transportation and infrastructure, because I believe those are the main key roles of local government.
Thank you, John O'. A few questions for you that Councilwoman Versens has acquired by talking to a lot of the Ward Three folks out there. First of all, what makes you the best candidate to represent Ward Three and what sets you apart from the other candidates?
Well, listening to Ruben's bio, he seems like a really good guy. I will be honest, I'd love to meet him. I wish he was here tonight. I've heard a lot of good things about him, and I don't view him as my enemy. I don't hate him. We seem like we have a lot in common. He's a wrestling coach. I grew up wrestling, and I've been a wrestling coach. I coach in the community soccer teams. But I think what really sets us apart and why I would feel more qualified, we both know the city very well. Been on the citizens advisory budget committee for the last few years, been an executive officer for the last three years. I think in many ways, we're very, we're both qualified. But what sets me apart is my vision for the future. And I think I wanted a vision where we can feel safe, have a high quality of life, and economic development. We have to have an environment where small businesses can thrive. And I think what sets me apart from my opponent is my policies and my desires are set where small businesses can thrive, where it's not the large businesses and corporations who are taking over, but it's the small businesses and middle-level businesses that can thrive, where people can have jobs, work freely. And in my environment, in my setting, the public safety, the economic development, and my knowledge of the transportation and infrastructure needs really sets me apart from my opponent.
Thank you. This goes right to the heart of what you were talking about earlier. What measures would you support to reduce Aurora's crime rate?
There's no doubt Aurora is, I would say unprecedented. But in the 90s, the reality is December of violence, there was a higher crime rate as far as percentage of the rising. But the reality is, we are at an almost unprecedented rise in crime across the board, every level, petty crime all the way up through. When you talk to the police officers, they're frustrated in some ways because one individual told me he had a man that they actually caught in the act of aggravated auto theft. They had him in handcuffs on the curb, and the man looked up at him and said, you might as well take these off because you know they're going to let me go. I think we have to allow them to enforce crime. Obviously, they have to have accountability. Even they would say that. But I think we're in an environment where we have, in many ways, coddling the criminal. And I've talked to, and I'm halfway through, but I'm knocking on every single door in Ward Three. I want to meet our community because that's the role to represent our community. They're very bothered with the fact that when they are the victims of a crime, they are punished. There's no information given to them. They feel like they have to pay these, they have, they get raped over the cold, whereas the criminal just gets a slap on the wrist and gets laid. So I think we have to, yes, educate and yes, become accountable, but we have to give law enforcement the ability to enforce crime, and we have to stop coddling the criminal, and we have to stop punishing the victim.
Thank you. What will be your concentrated area of policies? What do you hope to accomplish as a city council member with those policies? And what skills and talents, you alluded to this already, what skills and talents you think you'll bring for that job?
As I mentioned, my three main issues are safety, because I believe that is dead set on one of the main issues that's going on in Aurora right now. People just don't feel safe. You hear that over and over and over and over. That is no doubt, talking and surveying the community, the number one issue right now, whether it's in low-income areas or high-income areas and everywhere in between. Whether it's the single lady that I talked to who says, we need, I'm not going to go into that story, but she said, we need more policing. She's a single lady, and she doesn't feel safe. And then you talk to that 85-year-old lady who you're having a conversation with, who has a homeless person sleeping beside between her house and the next. And you have, as I'm having this conversation with her, my six-year-old daughter next to me, a vehicle drives by on three wheels, sparks flying, it's an auto theft. We just don't feel safe. I think safety is something that I would like to support. Economic development, my knowledge of the budget committee, I'd love to help create. I'm not promising something that's one out of 10 in council, but I'd like to be a part of helping create an environment where businesses can thrive, and as businesses thrive, people can thrive as they work for those businesses. And in my knowledge of the transportation and infrastructure, we've been at a $20 million shortfall since 2008 on roads. We can't just, I said this, we can't just keep kicking the can down the road because it'll literally get stuck in a puddle. And we have to address that shortfall. Those three things are my main issues. Number four, one that has come up recently is homelessness. That's another one I'd say behind crime, homelessness, as you go to the doors, that's what people are talking about. And we do have to create a clean environment where people are proud to live.
All right, and you started to talk about this a little bit, and let's address this a little bit more. How would you address the $21 million shortfall that we have in road maintenance, for example?
As a citizens advisory budget committee, I had the privilege of sitting on the subcommittee that dealt with this very issue, transportation. And we came up with several different ideas to address this. One of them, one of the areas that I like most is we have come upon with the wayfair decision, I don't want to get into the weeds of things that are not understandable, but we have, as a city, had this large, unexpected revenue gain from marketplace facilitators. So you think e-commerce, Amazons, those kind of things, third-party vendors. And as that money has come in, there is money available that is in excess of what we were planning. One of the ideas is to put at least a portion of that towards our road maintenance, because when you think of the two and two together, e-commerce has to use roads to get the product from the warehouse to the house. So they have to use roads. So why not put that money? That seems like a common sense solution. One of the other things is actually use auto and auto and sales tax to actually allocate that towards roads, because that's one of the main purposes of that. There are several other areas that we had as far as suggestions. One would be moving 4% to 5% of the, of any excess of the budget towards addressing that $20 million shortfall. But there are several good, reasonable, common sense solutions to be able to reach that $20 million shortfall, because we have to take care of our roads.
All right, thank you. Interesting one that Marcia picked up was had to do with inclusionary zoning. Do you support inclusionary zoning? Yes, why? If not, why not?
Inclusionary zoning, my understanding of that is if there is someone building a house or a development, they are required to put a portion of that towards low-income housing. I think we definitely need more low-income housing. There's no doubt about it. I don't necessarily think that inclusionary zoning is the best answer for that, because ultimately, that just gets passed on to the other 80% of the tenants. And so it makes 80% less affordable, and it prices really middle-class people out of the housing market. I think a better way to address that would be on the state level with addressing the construction defect laws. But bottom line, we have, let's just estimate, 10,000 people moving into Aurora every single year. We can't just put up a no-bankers sign. We love Aurora, and we want it to thrive. But we only have, let's estimate 1,000 or less housing units available for that. So the answer, the high school economics answer of that is 9,000 people cannot afford or attain housing. So we need all three, low-income housing, middle-income housing, workforce housing, executive housing, across the board. And so anything we can do to meet the demand and increase supply, I'm in favor of. We have to be smart about it. Water is limitless, or is not limitless. So we can't just say, hey, everybody develop everything. But I am, I'm not in favor of inclusionary zoning, because I think what that does is it limits the motivation to build and develop much needed talent.
Thank you. Final question for you here tonight. If elected, how would you handle your day-to-day job and yet still be responsive as a council member? It's one issue council members have to deal with on time memorial. What do you think a council member does, from your point of view? And how much time do you think it takes? And how much time are you willing to give to this job?
Oh, my wife is incredibly smart. I'm just going to have her do everything. I'm kidding. Seriously. But she's a very strong woman. I am very excited for this opportunity. With my job, I have flexibility. I just finished a master's degree, which took me about 20 to 25 hours a week to complete the courses and work through the projects and reading it all of a sudden. So in my mind, that buys me about 20 to 25 hours that are not added to my schedule, but will be replaced into my schedule. But I think that does help. But also, my work in the community, I'm the director of a food bank. I coach community soccer. I'm a pastor. I spend time with people in my community. And city council is supposed to serve the community as a representative. So I think a lot of those things over lack. So then, I don't segment, yes, there is separation of church and state. I believe in that as both a Baptist and St. Luke and a government constitutional need. So on both sides, I think of separation of church and state. But I will say, I believe I have the time to do it, and I, well, with all of my effort. And I want to communicate and represent our community as well. And I don't think leaders in government positions are to be rulers, they're to be representatives. And as I represent, I want to do that. That's the way we're set up, is to have common people that are attainable into a community setting, where the community sets state, and you represent our needs at the city level, at the county level, at the state level, at the federal level. And that's how I intend to represent rather than rule our communities.
All right, thank you. Let's probably go wrap up the questions, and I'm sure you believe in that. But it also gives you an opportunity now to take two minutes and kind of wrap things up and tell everybody why you think you're the best guy for this job.
I would thoroughly enjoy and count it a privilege if I could have your votes in November, well, really October into November. I want to represent us as a community. I want to put the time into learning more about our community. I have grown up in the community. I'm raising my family in this community. I'm heavily invested in this community. And as the community succeeds, so does my family. And so do we all. And so I think as my main three issues, safety, economic development, transportation, you could add on to that homelessness. I think we have to address those, and we have to have leaders that are caring and concerned about those issues. If you have questions, I am big into representative government. I want to be accessible. Reach out to me. Talk to me. I'll give you my phone number. I'll give you my email. I'll give you, I'll give you my address. I'm happy to sit down and talk with you about your concerns, about your suggestions. And as a city and as a community, specifically Ward Three, I want us to thrive. And I think as we thrive, we can thrive together. And so please consider voting for me. Vote for me, John O'Scott, November 2nd, 2021. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you, John O'. I think what we're going to do now is take a little bit of a break. We're going to do five minutes, and Barbara will be walking around with her little car saying, when you have only 30 seconds in the battle. So let's take a five-minute break here, and then we'll have a give us time to set up, and then we'll launch into the at-large candidates.
Can I say, if anybody has questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, so please come and talk to me.
Thank you.
And there is material on the two fact check that you want to grab wire up.
John O', I got a question for you. Let's keep this thing rolling. So what's the plan for affordable housing? How are we going to, what are some, what are some ideas to more, instead of inclusionary zoning, which you disagree with? What are, so we talked earlier about how you think that developers should have incentives, stay away from giving people direct money and give it to the developers instead to create incentives for the developers to create affordable housing, right? So can you tell us a little bit more about how that works?
I don't think we should give money to the developers. I think we should make it less of a restriction. Oh, I don't think we should give money to the developers, but I do think there's ways to incentivize it without giving them money. So I'm not in favor of using city funds to give to developers. There's some creative ways to make that work. Some people have looked into the community land trusts, which is a model I'd be interested in looking more into.
Okay.
I don't, there's things about it I like and things about it I don't like.
Okay.
But that's a model that we potentially could explore.
What about the minimum wage? So right now, the minimum wage is at $12.32 an hour pegged to inflation. So if inflation goes up as a percentage, the minimum wage goes up with it as a percentage? Do you think that $12.32 an hour pegged to inflation is enough here in Aurora?
Well, I don't think it's enough to live on. But I don't think those jobs are necessarily designed to be a living wage. And by that, I mean, I have a 14-year-old daughter. I don't expect her to make a living wage. But what I do expect her to do is make a $12.30 pegged to inflation wage, where she can put some money away for college, she can save, you know, she can spend, and she can learn the basics of a budget.
Yep.
And then as she does that, she's meant to get some education and to, as a land of opportunity, be able to either start her own business or work or climb the ladder. And so I don't think minimum wage is something that needs to be government mandated. I think it's more market-driven. And I think that the peg to inflation is reasonable.
So just recently, Councilmember Juan Marcano wrote a letter to Joe Biden requesting Afghani refugees to come in here. And what do you think about that? Do you think, are you in support of that, of the Afghani, tens of thousands of Afghani refugees coming over here from Afghanistan?
There's two sides of that, all right? I love that Aurora is a land of diversity, and I think that there should be, I'm not for everybody come, you know, we're already having a hard time with jobs and housing for who we do have. And so to say, hey, 10,000 more people, let's add, it's only going to add to the hard job market. It's going to add to the affordable and attainable housing needs. And so in my sense, I say, yeah, the compassion side of me says, hey, bring them in. But then the also, the other side of me says, well, we have a hard enough time with the housing and job market right now as it is, to say, hey, bring in 10,000 more. So on the compassion side, yes. On the, hey, what about the residents here right now and the people living here? I'd say, hey, we really got to think through this and.
So you lean toward no or lean toward yes?
I haven't really thought through that, a hard answer to that, but I would say I'd probably lean toward no.
Okay. All right, thanks, John O'.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Looks like we're everybody's back in their seat. Welcome back to the Ward Three forum. I'm pleased that we have, for this particular event, the majority of our at-large candidates for city council here this evening. As you know, the at-large candidates represent us all regardless of ward. So getting to know each of the candidates will be crucial in helping you decide on who will represent you on the city council Aurora as an at-large candidate. Our at-large candidates are Candace Bailey, Hannah Vogel, Becky Hogan, Danielle Jorinsky, John Ronquio, and Dustin Zabonic. Why do you always come up last? Zabonic, okay. We take the second letter. Okay, well, Ms. Bailey and Ms. Vogel, is it?
Vogel.
Vogel, okay, Ms. Vogel. We're not able to join us this evening, but as I said, the majority of our at-large candidates are here to introduce themselves and answer a few questions that we in Ward Three haven't yet. As I read your short biographies, please feel welcome to take your seat at the table. Let me find your biography, so I know who everybody is. Becky Hogan. Becky Hogan immigrated from Korea to the United States when she was an infant and became a naturalized citizen. She's a certified economic developer and owned and managed a small business in Aurora. She currently serves on the Aurora Planning and Zoning Commission and is chair of the Aurora Sister Cities Korea Committee. Becky actively volunteers in our community. Have a hand for Becky, please. Danielle Jorinsky. Danielle was born and raised and graduated from Oberland High School, so she's born and raised right here, went to community college and started her own business right here in Aurora. She's an Air Force veteran from Buckley Space Force Base and the mother of one son. Danielle actively volunteers and gives back to our community. She currently serves on the Aurora Citizens Advisory Budget Committee. Welcome. John Ronquio. John is a CU Denver professor, where he teaches and researches social equity and public management. He lives with his family in Salivore, where his two sons attend Cherry Creek Schools. John currently serves on the board of La Raza, the Arapaho County Foundation, and the advisory council of the Colorado COVID-19 Eviction Defense Project. Welcome, John Ronquio. And surprisingly, the last one in here, Dustin Zabonic. Dustin is an entrepreneur, was worked in public policy, and served as the vice president of strategy and innovation for a national nonprofit company. He went on to start his own business known as Zabonic Consulting. Dustin lives with his wife and three children and is a member of the Easter Hills Community Church. Dustin currently serves on the Aurora Citizens Budget Advisory Committee, where he chairs the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee. Let's welcome Dustin Ronquio. Let's welcome Dustin Zabonic. Well, I will say, I'm delighted. I know all of you and it's delightful to see all of you here this evening, that you've taken time out of your busy schedules. And I know how tough it is to do that, as busy as we have been, and give us an opportunity to hear your little two-minute tapes on things. Now, I think all of you were here when we went over the, the ground rules, so we're all on, we're kind of on a two-minute time thing. If you're a football fan, you know what it means, sorry. They can usually last for anywhere from up to 10 minutes. All you need to do is keep an eye on Barbara and she'll keep you on track and let you know when your time is up. Now, let's start with some opening remarks. We'll do this alphabetically. Sorry, Dustin. So Becky, if you would start us off, please.
Thank you very, very much. Can you hear me okay from the back? Great. Thank you, Councilmember Burzens, for hosting this candid forum. Good evening. My name is Becky Hogan and I'm running for Aurora City Council at large. Nineteen years ago, I met a man that many of you may know as Stephen Hogan or Mayor Hogan. I didn't call him that usually, but everyone's involved, I would. I fell in love with this man. This man loved his city. Therefore, this city, Aurora, became the family and our home. I'm an economic development professional. I'm working, I've worked for cities like Greenfield, Westminster, Sherwin, Parker, and I've worked with cities. I've worked a number of cities throughout metropolitan area. I know how to bring jobs. I know how to retain jobs. That's what we do as an economic development practitioner. I understand land development. I know what it takes to build vital and sustainable communities here in Aurora. I have three priorities for my service at City Council. Community safety, transportation and economic development, and restoring stability of our city council. I believe in collaboration, finding common good between community, business and government. Please vote for me again, Becky Hogan, Aurora City Council at large.
Hi there. I also want to thank all of you for being here tonight as well as Councilmember Burzens. My name is Danielle Jurinsky. I'm Aurora native and proud of my hometown. I have to say though, in the last couple of years, my hometown doesn't look the same anymore. It's a lot different from, from what I remember from my childhood here in Aurora. I do have one son, he's two years old, I'm raising him in this city. It bothers me at this point, you know, what the city looks like compared to when I was a child. It's part of the reason why I was running, why I am running. I own four bars and restaurants across the Denver metro area, two of which are in Aurora. I absolutely am a job creator in Aurora and invested in our community. I served nine years in the Air Force. Six of those nine years, I was a military police officer. The other three, I was in munitions. I served six of those years also at Buckley, which is now Space Force Base. It's going to take me a minute, of course, if this Space Force Base came down. One big thing for me about Aurora is Aurora is often overlooked as a major military city, but we are a major military city. I understand the missions and the operations at Buckley Space Force Base and I think it is crucial that we keep a Buckley veteran on council. Again, my name is Danielle Jurinsky and I'm running at large and I hope to earn your vote.
Good evening, everybody. Councilmember Burzens, thank you for arranging this. Any city staff who work here after hours, we appreciate you being here. And all of you who took the time and out of your speed to be here this evening, thank you. It's an honor to share this community, one that I love very much and one that I will be honored to serve on our City Council at large. My name is John Ronquillo. I'm a father, husband, I'm an educator and researcher, and I'm somebody who's equally concerned about our community as well. I love Aurora because Aurora has provided me and my family the greatest sense of stability that we've ever known as a collective family unit. As a father of two young children, I'm on with special needs, Aurora has been a community that we crave, never had, because I was dragging my family across the country for my school, for my work. But here we've been able to grow as a family unit. Here we've been able to be a part of it. Here we've been able to see the value that exists in this community. If you think really hard, I've passed five of your stories you've heard about Aurora, my guess would be that most of them aren't very positive. That's something I won't change because I see the potential for this great city to have. Like my fellow candidates, I have sort of a three-pronged or a multiple-pronged approach for where I want to see us focus on in the next couple of years. The first is economic opportunity. And as we talked about, whether or not we're doing businesses to locate here, businesses with good practices, who pay their employees where they work, or whether that means that we are leaving those who struggle like I am in my early life and opportunity to thrive. That stability that I receive from my community is not something that I've experienced before and it's becoming a Carol across the board for many of our residents. The next thing I want to focus on is our public safety relations. We have to have good public safety in Aurora. We have to repair the relations that persisted over the past couple of years and the unfortunate events that were, unfortunately repeating myself, become. We have to look at public safety globally and we have to move forward with innovative growth. And I've got my right to, but none of this can happen without a strong administrative form of city policy. You all deserve a meaningful, responsive government, certainly. And my name is John Ronquillo, the Board of Representatives. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dustin Zabonic. I am a small business owner. I'm the father of three. I'm a member of the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee and I'm the only candidate that's running this, has both private sector business experience, both public sector policy experience. Growing up, I was raised by a single-tournaged mom who oftentimes was looking for work, which meant that we moved around a lot. Before I was 18 years old, I had moved almost a dozen times. So when my wife and I chose Aurora to be our home, the city where we were going to plant roots and wait our food, it was the first place that felt like home, not just for today, but for tomorrow. And it's that future, it's that tomorrow, it's our shared tomorrow that I'm concerned about. You see, a historic rise in crime has made our communities, it's made our schools, it's made our businesses, our families website. Misguided priorities and policies by the majority of this council has made, has made a hurt for our small business owners to operate in our city. In the midst of a pandemic, they put a pinch on small businesses that were already filling it in a way that they had never felt before. And then we had this, we heard a lot about civil disobedience. We've had this problem on council where there has been a push to, to advance a, I know, and been more of an interest to make a point than to make a difference. I believe that this November, we have a chance to restore common sense for our council. I believe we have a chance to prioritize, not politicize, public safety, to work with, not against, our small business owners and to give back to having a city government that is focused on finding solutions to our problems and making a difference for our community rather than focusing on partisan petty fights that we see in Washington that make people so frustrated by local state problems. So again, my name is Dustin Zabonic. I look forward to the conversation this evening and having to answer questions afterward and they said we'll get a chance to talk to you. So again, thanks, okay.
Well, in the interest of time this evening and to cover as much territory as possible, I'm going to ask you a question or two, to you at, two at a time. So you may not get the same question, but that way we can get some more territory than if we go all four of you on the same question. And everyone will have an opportunity to, I set this up so everybody has an opportunity to speak an equal amount of time. One thing to remember, this is a debate, not a forum. Okay. Well, I'm going to, you know, this is a forum and I think you've seen that already. This is a forum, not a debate, and it's a chance for all of you to share your thoughts and, and where you think the city ought to be going in the future. Now, as I said, initially, all of you are going to get, we're going to do the questions two by two by two. But the first one, I want all four of you to answer. And we'll start, just so we move around a little bit, with Ms. Jurinsky. So if you're all set, the question is, what makes you the best candidate to represent Aurora as an at-large council member and what sets you apart from the other candidates?
Well, I think a big part amongst the four of us, I am an Aurora native, I am a military veteran, as I told you. I am a job creator in this city. I have an amazing, incredible staff and I want to create more jobs. I am a single mom. I went to Overland High School, which is one of the most diverse high schools in Aurora. I'm a proud graduate. Most people, you know, say they would go back to high school over and I would. I was raised by a single father and one, one thing that I love about Aurora is the opportunity, the opportunity for someone like myself who truly comes from humble beginnings to make it. And I think that what makes me the best candidate is my upbringing in Aurora, my background, the fact that I'm a native and I don't think you'll find anybody that cares as passionately as I do about Aurora.
Thank you. Now we'll move to Mr. Zabonic.
So look, I view this whole campaign as a job interview. I'm here tonight to ask you for the job as City Councilman. And I think that when you sit in front of any prospective employer, you're telling them about your qualifications, what you've done and what your vision is for that position. So what I've done is I'm the only candidate in this race who's, who's signed both sides of a paycheck, but who is also working on the policy. I have had experience at federal, state and local level. So I know what it takes to get things done through government. But I also understand how governments, the decisions that are made in government impacted by a sector. I think that if, you know, we oftentimes overlook how important it is to have a, a knowledge and understanding of how things, whether it's transportation, public safety, or bringing jobs, just saying I'm going to bring jobs to Aurora isn't that powerful to me. And that's what I, I hope to get into more tonight. But I think that you need combination of that, private sector business experience as well as public sector policy experience is what sets me apart. And then the last thing I want to touch on is that, you know, when you heard of John O'Scott, he's running for Ward, we are Ward candidates, but you're, when you have a pothole and we need to do stop sign, more often than not, you're calling your Ward representative and they do a great job for you. But I believe that a big portion or a big part of the job in that large candidate is to set a vision. This job is an award for right, we need to set a vision. I believe Aurora should be the safest big city in the country. I believe Aurora should be the most job-friendly city in the state. And I actually have a plan to make that happen. I want to set a vision that we can work towards each and every day. So that's where I think that my experience in business helps me to understand that we need to set a vision and make sure that every council meeting, every policy meeting we were having, isn't off on some tangent trying to, to talk about some issue that we actually have no ability to impact, but instead is working towards that vision. So again, the combination of government and public sector, private sector business experience, I believe is what sets me apart.
Mr. Ronquillo, what makes you the best candidate to represent Aurora as an at-large council member and what sets you apart from these other candidates?
Thank you very much for the question. I think it's really important because I would rate Mr. Zabonic, but it is John over and over and over here for the next two months. So here, I think that one of the reasons that we need to distinguish ourselves is because there are 10 council people and deciding things in a consensus is very difficult, as we've seen. And so a lot of us are going to bring different things to the table. What I bring to the table is a lifetime of public service, a lifetime of prioritizing public service over hyperpartisan policies. I've educated hundreds of public servants in Colorado beyond, people who are policy analysts, budget analysts, people who are students of public trust, and that's something that we're all responsible for. I also have experience on several Board of Directors, being the public beneficiary of the funds that we have to be good stewards of. And so I think that professional experience, tactile experience as an educator, a top policy analyst, a top management, I teach people how to serve a government. So I feel that with that lived experience and the combined training that I bring me to be prospective to City Council. Before I ran out of time on my last comment, I mentioned in the straight-up forum, I have spent multiple professional career finding ways to make sure the government is nimble, responsive, innovative. There are so many things that we do in the City Hall are good, there are so many that need changes. Aurora is a big city with big city challenges and we have to confront that with a big city vision. And that's what I prepared to do and that's what sets me apart.
Thank you, too, Becky. What makes you the best candidate?
Oh my goodness. Thank you again for this opportunity. What makes me the best candidate for this position is I have lived in three of the six wards in our city. And if you are running for a ward or if you have lived in different wards, you understand that there are uniquenesses in every part of the city of Aurora. And I've enjoyed those uniquenesses and I've gotten to know those neighborhoods and I understand how our city works together versus apart. I bring a unique set of skills. Having worked for a city, I understand what it's like to be staff, the systems, the processes, the compliances that need to be accomplished. Having worked with cities, I understand the representation and the reputation that you have, not only in your own community, but metropolitan body. I think that the experience that I bring is institutional memory. Being the oldest candidate at this table, I have also experienced what has occurred in our city, some of the excellent choices that has advanced our city and some of the choices that we could do better at because I don't want to repeat mistakes, not in our city. We don't need to do that. Will it be a joy to serve this city? Its experience that I have as both an employee as someone, a consultant that works with the city and having been married to an elected official, I understand what it is like to serve, the time that it will take to serve and the commitment to speak in your vote of voices and not my own.
Thank you, Becky. Okay, what we're going to do is the two by question kind of thing. So just to make it more interesting, so we have the microphone all the way at that end, we're going to start with Becky and then we're going to follow up, follow over the same question to Dustin here. And the question is, do you support the practice of considering economic development incentives to attract and retain businesses that employ a significant number of employees in Aurora? Yes, why? And no, why not?
I do support that. And one of the things I have done as an economic development practitioner is written incentive policy. I've written it for the cities of Lewisville, Parker, Northland, Westminster, Greenfield, and Inglewood. So I have a great deal of knowledge in terms of how incentives work, what the commitments are by the developer or the end user, if you will, and how the city benefits from that. I think that it is better to use a carrot than a stick and I believe that you get much accomplished through economic development incentives than but for the incentive development you're not.
Thank you. Back to you down at the table here, folks. To Dustin. And Dustin, again, do you support the practice of considering economic development incentives to attract or retain businesses, employ a significant number of employees?
I do, but I have to be honest. I think we have to be careful, right? And economic incentives can often be abused, you may even see problems. And I think that we're, you're talking about like there is a need for elected representatives to have a dutyary responsibility to the taxpayers, to make sure that if we use incentives, that the return on investment is impactful and be there. Because if we're just doing it to lure, we could end up with a bad deal, guess whose money we're dealing? And so I, I think that it's worthwhile always to consider, but we have to be careful. And I would want to make sure that there's accountability. I want to make sure that there's oversight. I want to make sure that when we do, if we are, that we are taking any consideration, who I believe we're going to trust and protect is not the developers, it's the taxpayers.
Thank you, Dustin. Next questions are for John and Danielle. And the question is, can you explain in general how Metro District Fund- And the question is, can you explain in general how metro district funds development, do you think they need more oversight, and why?
Would I first?
Yes, please.
I'd be fine.
Okay, you're welcome. I think metro districts are getting a lot of attention for a lot of reasons. For one, their intent is to be a tool to provide some destruction. Recently, a legislation passed by partisan opposition to add some more transparency to what metro districts do. Folks I've spoken to at their doorstep have expressed a lot of frustration around metro districts because they're surprised by taxes. But for the most part, there is fine print that people can read and understand how these metro districts operate. This legislation that passed recently was intended to make some more transparency when it comes to metro districts, especially the metro districts where people are impacted. Because you can't really grow without metro districts. There are metro districts that are focused exclusively on commercial developments as well. But for this legislation that was passed, it was to make sure that people are aware when there are elections for their wards, and people are aware when there are opportunities to debate lines that metro districts can let in. And third, for whatever reasons it's keeping, but people have gone back to Senator Rages and Zinger and said, this is a good start, and we need more clarity to make sure that metro districts are not making people feel left out, that we are increasing the transparency. So in terms of infrastructure, I see where they're needed, but where there's an opportunity to make sure that they continue to be leveraged for good growth, good infrastructure, and building up communities, then I see what they're values. But I also feel, and I'm looking for this process as well, is that metro districts have an opportunity to engage residents at one of the most basic levels, as quasi municipalities, they have opportunities to get engaged and steer in the correct directions of these metro districts go. So if you don't like it, get involved and make change, or you can give it to the districts to develop.
John and Danielle.
I believe that metro districts are imperative for development in any community. I think it's how communities are built up, you know, and how funds are presented to build these communities. Do I think that there should be oversight? Absolutely, I think that there should be oversight, either no one should just have a blank check. And we do have to think about the taxpayers over the developers. But with that being said, I think that it is not just needed for metro districts, I think it's imperative to have metro districts to build up our communities.
Thank you, Danielle. Next question, the mic will keep, the mic near you, for Becky and Danielle. So we'll start with Becky. What do you think about Aurora water providing services to developments outside city limits?
Well, I actually just recall that there's been one case that Aurora has done that. So I wouldn't say that it was a history of doing this, and that was to the Sterling Ranch development. I think that when you have an excess of a resource, and that it's for a finite period of time, I think sometimes it's worth helping your neighbor with that resource. In the Sterling Ranch case, they needed water for a temporary period of time, and frankly, they were willing to pay for that resource. The city of Aurora had the ability to share that for a temporary period of time, and was paid in full for that resource. So as we have the availability under a strict condition, for a very distinct amount of time, sometimes I do think you help your neighbor.
Answers sound almost identical. Is that okay? I feel the same way. I'm not against helping our neighbors, as long as it doesn't put Aurora citizens out. If we have a surplus, and a neighboring community, you know, is willing to pay for it, I certainly don't think that our resources, such as water, should be given away for free. But as long as our neighbors are willing to pay for it, and we have a surplus, we should absolutely put it to it.
All right, our next questions are for John and Dustin. So we'll come down to this end of the table. If elected, how will you handle your day job and be responsive, be a responsive council member? And what do you think a councilman or member does, and how much time do you think it takes? Quite often, people go, oh, I'll just come in and do this part-time job, but I'd like to hear your take on it.
Sure, it's an important question. A part-time job yields part-time results, let's be honest. And that's something that a city of our size needs to address constantly, certainly. I will fully admit, as a professor, as an academic, I have a lot of privilege in terms of my schedule, as long as I'm teaching my classes, as long as I'm making my meetings, as long as I am producing a piece of research every year, I largely am a steward of my schedule. So I've got time. And I realize that that's not the case for everybody, but I realize that people have a lot of struggles in terms of balancing schedules, right? But I do believe that for an at-large councilperson, you deserve somebody who can devote as much time to this as possible. And there's been some talk, again, conversation at the doors, where people have said, what do you think about a full-time council? I think there's probably a lot of pros to this, and there's probably some cons, but if you think that of those pros, is that you are devoted entirely to the benefit of welfare this year. That you focus on finding solutions, that you focus on finding results, and frankly, that you're reducing any potential conflicts of interest as well. Being that we all have full-time jobs, that's a balance. We have parents and grandparents, so the time that it takes to run a city of our size is probably more than we actually expect at times. But I think that if we, you know, are committed to the city, we're going to put as much time into it as we can. I know that I certainly want to put as much time into it as I can, because I feel that the needs that we have are really outpacing our ability to respond to that. And the only way that we're going to really, I want to do more than just move the needle boats. We need policies that actually got traction, and we want to grow a lot of ways, and that's not just physical infrastructure, but also just all around, providing the type of city that we deserve.
Thank you, John and Dustin.
So the time commitment portion of it, I own my own business, I set my own schedule, which often means that I'm way too early sending emails, and I'm way too late doing the same. A consideration for me before I even decided to announce was whether or not, you know, I could do this, given my job commitment, and in fact, I have three young kids. But I'll tell you what, I wouldn't be doing this, I wouldn't be making this commitment, and I couldn't do the job. I have an expectation for how many hours it's going to be. I'm sure there's going to be weeks where this won't feel like a full-time job. I don't agree with John, that it should be full-time positions. I think if we can run a $34 million enterprise in the state government with a part-time legislature, we can run a $900 million city enterprise with a part-time city council. And these are not, these roles are public service. So I don't believe, I think that council has the ability to adequately manage the city, and ability to grow government to do it, but in terms of my time commitment, I wouldn't be sitting up here asking before, asking for your vote, if I didn't make the commitment myself, to do it the best for the city.
Thank you. All right, our next question is for Danielle and Dustin, so we'll keep it between the two of you. And that question is, what major change would you most like to see in Aurora?
Two. If I have to do one, I guess I have, I have the mic, so two. First one is, I want to see Aurora being the safest big city in America. It wasn't long ago that we posted about being one of the safest big cities. And I think in order to do that, we need to make sure our police department is fully run, and fully staffed, fully trained. I also want to help a number of our small businesses that have been hurt throughout this pandemic. They've seen more vandalism and penny crime. I would like to use some of the ARPA funds that we have available, and I question you out there, you know this, we have $64 million from the federal government. I'd like to see the city create a grant program that small businesses can use to have more lighting, motion sensors, things to stop some of that penny theft. So I want to see Aurora back on the top of that list as the safest big city. Secondly, I want to see Aurora be the most job-friendly city in the state. I believe Aurora can be a driver economic opportunity, not just for those of us who call Aurora home, but for the entire region and for the state. And I think in order to do that, one of the first things I would do is to create a red tape roundup commission, and ask anybody who complies with regulations in the city of Aurora, what are some of the rules and regulations that you can try to adhere that are harder or punitive than we face in other cities, and let's get them on the books. Let's make Aurora the most job-friendly city. Let's add certainty to small businesses by not trying to apply on them like you've seen in the past year and a half. So those are the two priorities. I believe there, look, I also believe there's a little hint of love here. If you want to have jobs, and you want more businesses under the city, you have to be a city of the same. And so I think that while I sit here, it really goes together.
All right, Danielle, and you can give two as well.
This whole going second thing, I feel like I'm sort of in shadows here. My answer is pretty similar. Dustin and I are the only two at-large candidates that hold endorsements from the Aurora Police Association, the Aurora FOP, Personal Aurora Police Union, as well as just yesterday picked up the Arapoc County Sheriff's FOP endorsement. I want to see Aurora support our police again. I understand that there's communication, I understand that there's talks that need to be had, I understand there's distrust between citizens and law enforcement right now. I want to bridge that gap. I've served as both a police officer, a military police officer, and ended everyday citizen in this city. There's conversations that need to be had, but we can bridge those gaps. Our city, our crime rates, carjackings, up 172%. Murder. Murder. Let that sink in. Is up 50% right now. That could be your loved one. That could be your neighbor. We need to restore faith in our law enforcement. We need to have the tough conversations, we need to deal with the bad apples that need to be dealt with, but we need to restore order back into this city. The second one, obviously, is supporting small businesses. Like I said, I own four bars and restaurants across the metro area. There's some things that I understand, Dustin talked about a red tape roundup. I want to be a part of that red tape roundup. Aurora has something unique to Aurora. There's a couple other cities in the state that have this, but it is an occupational privilege tax. This tax, if you are, if you are an employer in the city of Aurora, you pay this tax per employee. If you are an employee in the city of Aurora, this tax also comes out of your check, amount of time. Those are my two answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Purple. Okay, another question now for Becky and John. And the question is, do you support inclusionary zoning? If yes, why? If not, why not obviously? So, inclusionary zoning, and let's go ahead and take Becky first.
The short answer is no, I do not. I do believe in individual property rights. I do believe that there is a market that restores homes. I believe that developers and builders, if you will, that they are going to produce homes that people will buy, and not need to build things that people won't buy, which counterproductive to their business. Related to whether or not I believe that the city should mandate that, I do not. Again, it goes back to both the market and individual property rights. Do I believe that there needs to be a mix of housing in the community? Absolutely. You accomplish that through zoning, you accomplish that by looking at comprehensive land use plans that bring balance, you may even accomplish that through an incentive to a developer to build a certain type of housing. But inclusionary housing, as a fourth mandate from the city, our city, is a no-no.
John?
It provides opportunities to people who would not otherwise get those opportunities to live in a home, and I give it to them. Aurora is one of the most diverse cities in the state, if not the country. It is a microcosm of where our metro is at. The thing is, is that in terms of diversity, it's not just racial diversity, it's also socio-economic diversity. It goes from billionaires to athletes in the city as well. We had opportunities to talk to developers who were actually excited about, including affordable units and their plans. One of those developers talked to me about how he drove a government housing, because he was a young man. And he said that the number one obstacle to providing that wasn't that people were unwilling to have that as part of the unit, he said it was the city. He said that it was permanent, he said it was planned and so on. At the end of the day, I don't want to force anybody's hands. When it comes to an idea such as inclusionary zoning, I like to take my angle, I'm a data guy, I want to know the data that's up. But I do think that having seen what great opportunities offer the Aurora, I don't want to deny that to anybody. Just because of what you bring home from your paycheck, you have a real career, you're doing your best to try and contribute, not only to the safety of your neighbors, but also to the local taxpayers. When you want to be healthy and safe and secure at your home, you can be safe and secure at your job, you can be safe and secure in your community, and at the end of the day, that's all I want for this.
Thank you. Now that concludes the first round, and if you'd like to stick around, we can do probably a second round of questions for all these folks. How are we doing out there in the audience? Making it? Okay, I see a couple thumbs up. I see a couple people, I'm going to have to wake up. Kim, can you wake up, please? Thank you. Okay, good. Well, we'll do this second round, I think what we're going to do here, if Barbara will work with me on this one, she generally does. I would like to take the questions, because we're running out of time, to take the questions, the answers down to 90 seconds. Can you do your answers in a minute and a half? Dustin is kind of like, eh, eh, eh. All right, good. Well, let's keep going then. Our next round goes to Becky and Dustin. So we got that back cross-table kind of thing, and since the mic is closer down there, Becky, we'll pass it on down to you. And the question is, how do you address the $21 million shortfall we have in road maintenance right here in Aurora?
That is a great question, because if you have driven on our roads, you understand the congestion, you understand that roads are in disrepair, you will understand that things are not moving as quickly as you wish because you're stuck in traffic. We obviously have a transportation issue, and without roads, ways, you can see no development, and you will lose development here in this city. As far as choices, there are, there is a fund of money right now, I believe it's $64.5 million that we have gotten. Now, you can argue whether or not the federal government should give a municipality that money, but the reality is, they did. We currently have on city council website a survey in which you, as individual residents, can prioritize where you want that money spent. Do not sit back and say, it doesn't matter. Please, go on the website, put in your priorities of where these funds should be spent. If it's transportation that you're struggling with, transportation that you need in your neighborhoods, put some dollars for it. Do that. Give our council direction, so that they know how hard community, how our residents of this city want to spend those funds. My encouragement is that transportation need a good portion of that.
All right, Dustin, thank you, Becky.
So, John O'Scott mentioned that on CABC, we have a transportation subsidy. I shared that subsidy. What Becky was talking about, $64.5 million is the ARPA money we have, that's one-time money. You don't use that money to plug the $20 million gap that we have this fund going. If we have some one-time projects, sure, let's use it, but let's solve the problem. One of the recommendations I put in that proposal was to take that all of the sales and used tax from automobile sales, think about the buying tax, the local buying cars, why not dedicate that money to the capital projects fund? That would more than fill the $20 million that we're short every year. I think continuing to rely on gas tax, which is going away incredibly regressive, is wrong. We have to rethink the way we fund roads, and not just with one-time money, I'm happy to use some of that ARPA money to fix projects, but we need to solve this ongoing problem because since it's existed, no way, the structural debt is now over $40 million. So I want to, again, take those of the revenue that is generated from the sales and used tax on automobiles, dedicated to the capital projects fund, to fill our gap, and finally, finally, solve the shortfall that we have in road maintenance every year.
Thank you, Dustin. Our next question is for Danielle and John. You know, this has been a difficult time for Aurora police. A large number of officers have chosen to retire, chosen to move on. What would you do to restore the Aurora Police Department, both in terms of recruitment and standing in the community?
Good question, Purple, right? I think first and foremost, like I touched on before, we need to start supporting our police officers. I want to see our police officers involved in our community.
I want to see our police officers involved in our community. I attended the National Night Out for police. It was a pretty weak showing. I'd like to think that that's because it was raining and there weren't a few of us crazy enough to be out that night. I want to see more community involved with the police. You know, also too, I think that, I think we do need to look into police officers' benefits. I mean, they're leaving in droves. We're currently down 150 officers. Their morale is down, and they're leaving. I can't imagine in Aurora with no police officers, and I think that they need to be made a priority. Their line of work is tough, and I think we need to make them a priority and think about even, you know, some pay raises and some better benefits for our police officers.
Thank you, Danielle.
So I said to a certain degree in my last response that everybody in Aurora Police in that then demonstrates how needed our police officers, our firefighters are to help ensure that safety is felt within the community. It's no secret that Chief Wilson has talked about how a massive reduction in force is taking place with officers that are left in droves. It's unfortunate. I know we have ongoing casualties, and that's really important. There is that restoration of trust of citizens and citizens. We talk about public safety, I think that it needs to be examined from a bit of a global sense. Not just that every average, everyday citizen wants to be safe from potential crime threats, but I also have communities in color telling me that they want to feel safer with the police presence. So we have to dig into some of these difficult conversations. Again, I want to do everything I can to support the police department, to be reliant on our public safety. But I also want to make sure that it's not a zero-sum game, that we can't fold institutions that we support strongly to also account for any wrong move and incorrect. So we have to do that. Like Dustin and Danielle, I was also, and Becky also at the National Night Out with my father, who's a former military policeman. Dustin and Danielle tried their campaign skills, and nearly got us both. If I wasn't a grand, they probably would have succeeded. But things like that are important, they're necessary, because at the end of the day, we have humans. We have to realize that officers are putting themselves on the line, they are given to, and we need to recognize the lives that they are entrusted to protect are also at risk. It just blows out, because I've got my red card, speaking of red card, watching Chief Vanessa working on soccer with a young man after I'm great fond. Those are the inherent stories that we like, and we probably don't see enough of. But I do hope that we can have these conversations, that we can divvy them, not just provide ourselves, that we can try and make each other more available and stronger as citizens.
Thank you, John. The next question is for John and Becky. And the question is, how would you propose to deal with the homeless or the unhoused camps that have sprung up around Aurora? So, John, your question's right there, and I'll start.
So homelessness is an insidious problem. In my field, it's something we call a hidden problem, which is a problem that has no foreseeable sight, no foreseeable end in sight. And that's important, I don't want it to be a hidden problem. This is something that we have to do, that we have to address, and address it expeditiously. There are a lot of concerns around public safety, public health, and I share a lot of these concerns with folks who are concerned about the black. But at the end of the day, I just want people to realize that we're also in a hidden life here. I know that there are people from our council who are supportive of the work of the first model. I see the merits of that, and there are people who are performance of the housing model. There's a way that we can work to find a solution that can actually get these folks off the streets, out of public spaces, which is arguably a good advantage. Then I think we can, again, we will not just be, we will be more than that. But at the end of the day, we need a place to put these individuals. I realize that there are high incidences of drug use, I realize that there are high incidences of mental health risks. Just today, the Aurora Local Response Team is deploying in a portion of our city. This is modeled after the Caboose program in Eugene, Oregon, various elements of the smart program in Denver, the sense, train the non-personalities of the community to respond to needs such as those who are unhoused, and finding ways to de-escalate situations, ways where violence isn't incurred, ways where arrests are not made, and ways that are already constrained and under-resourced police departments are experiencing, again, because of the pressure of the police. We have to do something about it.
Thank you, John, and thank you for taking one of my questions out of the west of us and talking about the Aurora Public Social Response. Anyhow, Becky, your take on the homeless and the unhoused camps that are around Aurora?
I think that one of the blessings that we have on City Council is that we often see how people disagree, and how that disagreement can polarize and affect even a vote. This particular issue, John and I are very closely aligned. I do believe that we do need some kind of regulatory process, a plan, if you will, to deal with the unhoused, AKA the homeless. If I had been on council, I would have worked closely with the mayor and with our fellow council member to work with people like our community of faith, those that are affected by homelessness, community leadership, and particularly our police department. There's no point in having something that we cannot do for. We need to put a decent plan. For me, I think we need to balance property ownership, be it public or private, that if it is my backyard, you don't have the right to put up a stamp on my backyard. I feel the same way about public ground, but that should drive us to look for alternatives. Ultimately, we need to provide locations that can meet needs of those that currently are feeling a tent or a call.
Thank you, Becky. Our next question goes to Dustin and Danielle. And the question is, what role should the City Council take in working with Buckley Space Force base? And since the mic is close to you, Danielle, why don't you take that? I didn't get it right.
Yeah.
Space Force.
I know, it's going to be a one. I think that that's, Aurora should play a very intricate role. You know, not as far as government, I certainly don't think the military, right, falls under the UCMJ, their own governing body. So I don't think that we should take a governing role, but I think that we should have more interaction with Buckley. You know, veterans are stationed at Buckley for, you know, like three to five years that are on active duty. There's constantly, you know, new orders, bringing new waves of veterans into Aurora. I think there should be, you know, community outreach programs for these individuals, welcome them to Aurora. You know, veterans sometimes feel isolated, given, you know, depending on what our backgrounds are, or, you know, what we do in the military, we sometimes feel isolated. And I would love to see Aurora acknowledge, and I don't know what that acknowledgement looks like, but nobody ever talks about Aurora being a major military city, and I would love to see that happen.
Buckley adds over $1 billion to areas around Aurora. Most people don't notice, but Colorado is the second hardest aerospace state in the country. We oftentimes people think about California and Alabama, and California, Florida, California, Alabama, they think of these other states, but Colorado is number two in aerospace. We've got these space force spaces. I believe, remember at the beginning, I said I want Aurora...
To be the most job-friendly city in the state.
And I talked about one of the advantages we have is Buckley. So we even have the type of relationship, not a government, the relationship, partnership between the city and Buckley, who's going to continue to help us. How do we get those aerospace jobs to Aurora? Right around the base that we had here in Denver for many, many years, and is a pride of our community. So I think it's an important, just like, you know, oftentimes there are roles, there are hot roles with municipal government, and education is wonderful, we need to work with our school district. We might not have a direct role in government, but we have a responsibility to partner with Buckley. There's so much opportunity to provide for the rest of it.
Thank you, Dustin. Next question is for Danielle and Becky. And the question is, do you support creating a conference and event center in the city of Aurora?
I need one. Uh-oh. They turned it off on you? Uh-oh.
It may also be a battery problem.
You laugh. Did you laugh?
I didn't laugh, I'm calling batteries.
That's what I kind of thought.
Why don't you go up to the podium?
Come on up here and go ahead and answer the question. Come up here. That's why we have two mics. The question is, do you support creating a conference and event center in Aurora?
That one, I would have to, I think I would have to get some more information on. From my understanding, the Gaylord has, you know, conference and events spaces, so I would need to understand if taxpayer dollars are going to be used to create such a space. I would need to understand what that use is for, you know, and why couldn't we utilize the Gaylord or something else in Aurora?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
I think that the answer to that question is, do you support a conference space here in the city of Aurora? There are several different municipalities, Lakewood, Arvada, Parker, Lone Tree, that have active conference spaces. These are usually public-private types of cooperations, because those spaces take a good deal of investment to operate and to run. So I would look at this as going to our community, hearing your voices, seeing what you would like, and then making a decision based upon that, once you, the community, have the facts of what this is going to cost, not only to construct, but to run. And that includes staffing, as well as overall facilities management.
Thank you, Becky. Everybody got their walking shoes on here? We're almost done here. The last question, we just had Danielle and Becky, so the last one goes to Dustin and John. And let's see if we can find a good one for them here.
An easy one.
An easy one for you, okay. Let's see. All right, how about this one? Fairly easy for both of you. What part of the Aurora city budget do you feel is the most neglected or overlooked part of the budget?
You're close, sir.
So, for me, it's, when you ask yourselves, where should our budget go, right? City's budget? It should be our priorities. And when you, there's been survey after survey, where the city will go to the citizens and say, "What are our priorities?" Public safety and transportation. Public safety, we funded, we, public safety is funded, but transportation has always been neglected, and the biggest reason is that we get stuck in these one-time fixes, right? Instead of structurally fixing the problem in a way that's going to solve the problem for years to come. Too many times, we get federal funds. Let's use it for roads. It's great if it's for a project, a capital improvement project, where it's one-time hard cost, but if we're going to have consistently good roads to meet the growth that we need in our city, we have to prioritize it. So I think that the most neglected is roads. There's a lot of parts, you know, here's another thing I'm going to say that might not be popular, government's never been more flush with cash. I mean, right now, we're going to have a $40 million variance. What that means is we're going to have $40 million more dollars in the city government than we expected, plus the $64 million from the federal government. We need to make sure that we're funding your priorities, public safety and roads, and I think roads is really where we have an opportunity to make a difference.
Thank you, Dustin and John.
Hard to disagree with that, because if you've driven in any part of our city, we've had the mayor point out roads out in Southland, but I can also direct you to Delmar Circle. They're bad everywhere. So I would layer onto that in terms of transportation, also just a lot of physical infrastructure needs that we need as well. To diversify my answer a little bit, this city was built on small business. 60% of our revenue comes from small business, from sales taxes. So I would like to see the city be more business-friendly. I think all of us have talked about how we want to be a job-friendly city, that we want to create jobs. I do think that those small businesses need some reinvestment. I would love to see more thriving businesses that are owned by minorities, that are owned by women, that are owned by our immigrant community, that bring a lot of variety and diversity to our community. So I do think that those should also be resident-driven as well, too. And I do think that we should be granular with that as well, that we should focus on what our most pressing needs are, and use those, you know, very precious resources as wisely as we possibly can.
Thank you, John. You guys are using this microphone much better than I do. All right, that kind of concludes round two, and so we're going to kind of, I'm looking at the clock up there, it says, the clock tells me it's time for us all to go home and work really hard and send emails out until midnight, because Dustin said, all of you, I'm sure, are going to be doing that tonight, right? I have one last question that I want all of you to answer, and you get 30 seconds on this one to answer. Okay, and let me find that one, because I thought this is one that came from me. Knowing what you know about the challenges of serving on City Council, tell me, why the heck do you want to do this? And since we started with Amy's, Dustin gets to start things off here.
I'll be quick. Look, the public trust in government has, when you think about with Congress and what happened in Washington DC, there's always some sort of crazy joke about how low the approval ratings is. But people had faith when it came to our local governments, with our cities, our school boards, and our, our school boards, our cities, and our counties. People had faith in local governments. That faith has been broken, because our City Council has been focused on making a point and not making a difference. I believe that my background, my experience in policy as well as business, will help to make a difference. You'll hear candidates talk about problems, but what I hope you heard tonight was me giving solutions, specific solutions on how we can make our community better. That's what excites me about doing this, because as John said, Aurora has provided me and my three kids a stability I never had growing up, and I want to pay it forward.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next up here? Alphabetically, yeah. I'm glad you figured out one out, John.
Listen, I'll be honest, I've gotten a lot of, "Are you sure you want to do this? Are you crazy?" Lots of questions around that. This is a difficult job, but I do think that we are ready to put our own personal metal to the test when it comes to this. Otherwise, none of us would be here, right? And again, I've served the public my entire life. I realize that a lot of people feel that that's too entrenched, but it's because I'm putting others' needs above my own. That's what I was raised to do. Raised by a father who grew up in a very large Catholic household that was blended with 10 kids. Self-care wasn't a thing, because you had to share, you had to take care of other people. I believe that residents of this great city deserve people who are committed to moving the city forward, to having a vision and creating a place where, again, we can all feel safe. I feel that you need steady hands on that basis. I feel that you need pragmatic people on that basis, and I'm one of them, so I hope that you'll support me in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, 30 seconds. You do this, Danielle? All right.
I'm running, as I already mentioned. My hometown has become unrecognizable to me, and I believe that there's people in this city that are just bound and determined to divide us. That's not the Aurora I grew up in. Like I said, I went to Overland High School, one of the most diverse high schools in this city, and we loved. We loved, we played together, we grew up together. My city has become unrecognizable, and I want to take a stand to fight back against that. I also think it's time for fresh blood, for new blood into politics and into Aurora, and I represent that.
I began my introduction by saying Aurora is family, and you truly are family to me. We don't give up on family. We've hit a rush pot, excuse me, we've hit a rough patch as a city, and it's time to pull together and be one Aurora. I have the skill sets to have that happen again, and I need your help. There's been a larger disparity between our community voice and our leadership voice, and we need to close that gap, and I know how to do that.
Thank you, Becky. Almost sounded like we were kind of summing things up here with the, by answering that question, but I'm still going to give you all the opportunity to do, and we're going to give you a full two minutes, so John, you don't have to worry about that red card coming up so much. We're going to give you, we're going to give you two full minutes to kind of summarize what has driven you here, and why you think you are the person that should be elected as an at-large candidate to Aurora City Council. And we'll do this, we started ABC, we'll do it backwards again, so Dustin, why don't you start out?
Well, thank you all for being here this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. You know, it's seven weeks, just over seven weeks, it'll mark the end of this campaign. But I believe that it can do something, it could be something more. It could be the beginning of a new day for Aurora. It could be the beginning of having new leadership, as I mentioned, that's going to prioritize and not politicize public safety. It could begin a new day of leadership that's going to work towards making Aurora the most business-friendly city in the state. And it could be a new day to have new leadership that's going to focus on solving problems, not just bickering over the partisan differences, but diving into the details and solving problems. As I mentioned, I'm the only candidate that's running that's actually worked in public policy at all levels of government, but also worked in business. So I have that unique blend of experience to bring the City Council into work towards finding solutions to making sure that it's that public safety and transportation issues that are so important to all of you. So again, my name is Dustin Zavonic, I thank you all for being here, I hope I can earn your vote this November.
Thank you, Dustin, John?
I'll conclude by saying what I did at the beginning, I love Aurora. We are all here running for an at-large seat, and that word "large" is not just referring to my stature, but it's referring to the fact that we are a big city with big city issues, and we can confront that with big city vision. To scale that a little bit, I want you to think about this. Aurora is bigger than four football markets, Pittsburgh, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and New Orleans. Population-wise, we are bigger than all of them. Within a decade, we'll rival the population of Colorado Springs. My kids and grandkids will see Aurora become the largest city in the state. We need leaders with a vision, with that steady hand, and with the pragmatism to take care of what this very big, dynamic city needs. That vision is something that we can build together. Again, that stability that I've felt in the time that I've lived in Aurora, I've never felt more a part of a community than I have in Aurora, Colorado. We're not just the bedroom community that's east of Denver, we are a city in and of our own right. We are here because we care about the city. You've taken your time out of your evening to come and listen to all of us. I want you to take the time to also realize that you have a choice and that you have a voice, and that we can do this together. You can do that with your vote this November. On November 2nd, I hope that you'll consider John Ronquill, again, running for Aurora City Council at large. And thanks again so much for your time.
Thank you, John, Danielle?
I want to also thank all of you for coming out here tonight. I want to also thank you all for coming out here tonight. I kind of did give a closing in my last statement, but I just want to say that I think it's time for two groups of people who don't have a voice in Aurora to have a voice in Aurora. And that is our police officers, and that is our small business owners. I just want to add, I really wish I would have got the homeless question. One thing, you know, we keep hearing about, you know, these are humans, and I don't disagree with that at all, and we need a humane way to deal with the homeless. But I just want to add that as a small business owner, as a brick-and-mortar small business owner in Aurora, one thing that we are dealing with are the homeless coming in, and we have to come up with a solution for this. But in my bars and restaurants, they are coming in, and they are taking full baths in my sinks. I just want to put that out there, even though this is my closing statement, I really wanted to add that as to what other humans are dealing with in this homeless issue. My name is Danielle Jurinsky, and I hope to earn her vote.
Thank you, Danielle. Last but certainly not least, Becky Hogan, Becky?
Thank you again for coming tonight. I recognize the time that it takes and the commitment that it takes to come out and hear about your next leadership. So thank you very, very much, and again, thank you, Marsha, for hosting us tonight. We've talked a lot about experience and what it takes to lead. What was mindful for me in considering running for Aurora City Council is that if we have five new council members, the total experience on our City Council will be less than two years. That was concerning to me. I think that we do need people that understand government, I do think that we need people that are experienced in practical applications and helping run our city. I've been a community volunteer all over this city for over twenty years. I love this city with all of my heart. You are family to me, and I will be your voice for all of the different races, the cultures, the demographic differences. I'm asking that you consider electing me, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But thank you again for your time, and please consider electing Becky Hogan for Aurora City Council at large.
Thank you to all of you. You know, the good thing about tonight is that I think we have some exceptionally fine candidates for these at-large seats. I feel very good about that. And I feel good about what the 2022 City Council will look like, with people like this serving our great city. We wish all of you very best in this tough run for office in what I consider the greatest city in Colorado. It takes someone special, someone who's put service above themselves, to do what you're doing. So personally, and I think I speak for Marsha, thank you so much for doing this. Let's give them a hand. And finally, I'd like to thank Marsha, she's my councilperson. I've known her for so many years and really enjoyed working with her, being on the Citizens Advisory Budget Committee, and many other things that I've done in the Chamber of Commerce time with her, that sort of thing. And she did a great job pulling this together, and I really appreciate that, Marsha. As a matter of fact, why don't you come forward and kind of close us out, okay?
Thank you. It has been my honor to serve Ward Three for twelve years. I will be going off the first Monday in December, and I will be sad to leave because I've enjoyed it so much. We talked about how much time it takes, I have weeks where I've worked sixty hours a week. So, you better be sure you have sixty hours of weight to put in, because, you know, we have Monday nights that can turn into an eight-hour night. We have to serve on three policy committees, we are expected to get out and work in the community. You know, for example, I'm on the Board of Aurora Mental Health, you know, I am a member of the chamber. You know, and you are expected to do that, you're expected to get out and represent the city of Aurora outside of the confines of the city building. So, think about that, and you think about that, too. It's a wonderful job, and I will miss it. But let me make a few introductions, we do have former Mayor Legere with us tonight. Former City Council Member Brad Pierce. And we have a former clerk and recorder, Deborah Johnson. Let's see, one other candidate with us tonight, Bill Gondrez, he's running for Ward One. I don't want to leave out anybody, did I leave out anybody? What? Oh, Lynn Meyer, there you go, Lynn, thank you. Yes, and she held many offices, she is an important lady in the city. County Commissioner, yes, and right now, she's working for the Aurora Chamber, so thank you for coming. And once again, I want to thank you all for coming, we have our police department back here. Thank you so much for coming. And I would like to call the candidates, you know, you are giving up yours and your family's time together for a good three to four months, because you are focused on this race, and, you know, I, this job has broken up many marriages, so. It's, I'm serious, it has, it has, because of the time commitment, and I don't want to see that happen. So, thank you so much for putting the work in, and I, I'm so sorry that three of our candidates couldn't make it tonight. I was hoping to have a full house, but I do appreciate those of you that could come, I know things happen and come up. So I do want to tell you that there are yard signs, there's information over on the table. We also have, you heard people talking about the ARCA funds and the survey that's out. You can go, you can find that online, go to the city website, aurorgov.org, and look for that. But we also have hard copies, forms, and she will be putting them on the table up there, if you want to get one and fill it out, and it'll tell you what to do with it at the end, where to drop it off. So once again, thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate it, and please be careful leaving. I don't know if there are lights out there, so I hope each other, make sure everybody gets safely to your car. Thank you so much, did you have anything else, George?